I'd like to reconvene the regular meeting of the City Council Public Financing Authority. City Clerk may have their roll call, please.
Councilman Twiney?
Here.
Councilman Kennedy?
Here.
Mayor Pro-Tim McKeon?
Here.
Mayor Burns?
Present.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Here.
Councilman Williams?
Here.
All present, Andrew Gruehl absent. Pursuant to Resolution Number 2001-54, Councilman Gruehl has requested permission to be absent from this meeting. If there are no objections, it will be reflected in the minutes.
Alright, tonight's invocation will be given by Huntington Beach Fire Department Chaplain, Jeff Lopez.
That's right. Good evening. Thank you for having me. Please join me in prayer if you so choose. Heavenly Father, Lord God, I thank you for what this city means to me personally, what this city means to other citizens in the room, what it means to the employees here, to the electeds, and to any visitors here. Father, we're here tonight because we care about this city. We want what's best for this city. Therefore, Lord, I ask that you would give grace to this council, that you would enable them to serve even tonight selflessly. Father, that you would give them wisdom to serve skillfully. Father, that you would give them compassion to serve from the heart. Lord, and that you would give them the ability, Father, to serve with integrity and to bring their skills to bear the good of this city. Lord God, I pray for all of us in the audience, I pray for those who would address this council tonight, that you would help them to communicate clearly, that you would help them, Father, to represent their perspective skillfully, and that you would help them to honor this council with respectful speech. I pray, Lord, for the staff, that you would help them to support this council and to faithfully carry out the policies that they set. Lord, tonight, would you accomplish your will in and through this council. Father, I give you thanks, and I ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Tonight's, I mean, Pledge of Allegiance will be led by Casey McKeon.
Stand up your heart, ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the due role of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
City Attorney, do you have anything to report from closed session?
Nothing tonight, Mayor, thanks.
Council members, would any of you guys, have any of you have a comment? Don?
I just wanted to say I was able to make it down to the Edison Park today. They unveiled the temporary pump track. There was a lot of young families down there. Some kids got on the pump track with skateboards, scooters, and bikes. We had a bunch of ice cream down there. The city was down there, some of the local vendors. And it was actually quite a bit of fun. So if you've got some young kids or kids on bikes, scooters, skateboards, take them down there. It'll be there for a couple weeks, then it moves back to, or over to Murdy Park, I think, in September. So take your kids down. It's a lot of fun. Edison Community Park.
Anybody else? I just want to remind everybody that in a little more than two weeks, we'll start celebrating the Independence Day weekend, and check the calendars, because there's a lot of events going on throughout the city that includes after 4th of July. So it's gonna be a good time. City Clerk, do we have any supplemental communications?
Yes, Mayor, we have three supplemental communications for administrative item number 16.
Okay. Do we have anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, Mayor, we have 25 speakers.
Okay. Then I shall... Property decorum at City Council meetings is imperative in order to, for the public to remain informed about issues pertaining to the city's business. The public comments portion of the meeting is an opportunity for the public to be heard and address those issues in a public forum. Disruptive behavior impeding or delaying our ability to conduct the council's business will not be tolerated. Penal Code Section 403 prohibits disrupting this meeting, and enforcement action will be taken for violations of this law. At this time, the City Council will receive comments from members of the public regarding any topic, including items on the open session agenda. Individuals wishing to provide a comment on items may do so in person by filling out a request-to-speak form delivered to the City Clerk. All speakers are encouraged, but not required, to identify themselves by name. Please note that the Brown Act does not allow discussion or action on topics that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to speak directly with a council member on an item with not on the agenda may consider scheduling an appointment by contacting the City Council's Administrative Assistant at 714-536-5553, or emailing the entire City Council at city.council@surfcity-hb.org. That's good enough right now. We're gonna give two minutes. City Clerk, you can call the first... You can call. I don't care. Yeah.
When your name is called, please exit to the back of the building, and you will be directed where to line up. Andrew Einhorn, Barbara Richardson, Pat Goodman, TJ England, Eric N. Shine, Mr. Amory Hanson, Grace Herrera, Donald Eugene, Ken Inoue, Kanan Durham, Chris Reeney, Tim Geddis, Guest P., Russ Neal, Emily Sharp, Brian Thienis, Libby, Sherri Johnston, Regina.
A Barbara Richardson, 51-year resident. This Saturday, June 21st, is the start of the Huntington Beach Library Summer Reading Program for all ages. Everyone is welcome to join. This year's theme is Level Up at Your Library. Saturday, June 21st, is also the Friends of the Children's Library Summer Reading Program Kickoff Carnival at Central Library from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. There'll be food trucks, a silent auction, face painting, book walk, games, and crafts. There'll be two special programs. At 10:30, Sunshine Storyteller Ina Buckner Burnett will be performing Know Your Stories in the Tabby Theater, and at 12:00 noon, Dave Scale will be starring in his comedy magic show. Tickets for these shows are $5 each and can be purchased online at fotcl.org, or in person the day of the carnival while supplies last. So mark your calendars. The reading program runs from June 21st through August 2nd at all Huntington Beach Library branches. The Summer Reading Program Carnival is this Saturday, June 21st, from 10:00 to 2:00. Happy summer and happy reading. I'd also like to take this time to thank all the residents who came out and voted overwhelmingly to support our library against censorship and privatization. Our library is the jewel of our city, and our residents have shown just how much our library means to them, how much they appreciate our library and its staff, and how the majority of our residents want to keep our library just as it is. Thank you so much, Huntington Beach. Thank you.
Mayor and City Council members, I'm a United States Naval Officer, served on special duty in the United States Merchant Marine. That was granted to me by congressional nomination too, and presidential appointment from the United States Naval Academy, known as the Merchant Marine Academy at Kings Point in New York. It was started by Congress before World War II and the Merchant Marine Act of 1936, and a whole string of federal legislation that saw that World War II was coming, and led up to it, and the efforts of FDR when he was Secretary of the Navy, Assistant Secretary of the Navy. The academy is run by the Navy, or it used to be. Since 2003, it appears by the Coast Guard, which is running the academy, which is a huge problem. It is a captive institution that was focused upon in 9/11. We are at war with the European Union, and it's founded in 1991, but has been around in one form or another for longer, and is known alternatively as Rome, and it's royal in nature. Our American flag has been seized upon by the European Union or its agents in the form of what used to be known as minimally APL and Maersk, a small bit of what has been going on for a very long time. The ship that took out the Baltimore Bridge was named the MV Dolly, and it was contracted out by Maersk, that is Dutch, or from the Netherlands, and the Netherlands is owned and controlled by the European Union. The European Union is what is called asymmetric, or economic warfare, and dates back to the Exxon Valdez and much longer, and the U.S. Coast Guard was involved in all of these. The Costco Bousson is another example of what is again euphemistically called asymmetric warfare, and it has been interesting backstory behind it, but must defer it for now.
Andy Einhorn, 40-year Huntington Beach resident. Your repeated failure to govern for the benefit of the entire Huntington Beach community is not strength. It's weakness masquerading as leadership. You have chosen division for diversion, which is a political theater. For example, your first acts in office, the reckless elimination of the citizens' committees, was not a mistake. It was a deliberate move to silence the community input and increase your control. It was a massive strategic failure that alienated residents and dismantled decades of civic engagement. The airshow settlement fiasco, a giveaway that sold out taxpayer funds and exposed your ability to negotiate a settlement on a second-grade level of conflict resolution. Forget the light show. Your revenue projections need a full audit. Instead, you should focus on marketing. This facility and associated spaces right here. This generates real revenue without damaging our park, disturbing wildlife, or residents. Do you have any intention to try to unify our community, or will you continue to serve with the same level of integrity as President Bonespur, aka President Taco? I certainly hope it's the latter. As Tom Petty once sang, and I quote, "We will not back down, and make no mistake. We, the citizens of Huntington Beach, will stand our ground firmly, peacefully, and professionally." Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Mr. Amory Hanson. I'm speaking tonight to express my support for IM13, the Infrastructure Fund Annual Report. I'm proud to support the many infrastructure projects that this council has shepherded, from the stores downtown to the islands of the harbor. I urge the council to continue to use the infrastructure fund to continue funding similar projects. Once again, I urge a yes vote on IM13. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Okay, the results are in. 60% of HB voters were in favor of issues A and B. 40% voted no on these issues. An overwhelming majority are fighting back against the extreme MAGA cult. How does it feel to be rejected by 60% of the city? Are you on a power trip, or what? MAGA and the Nazi cult. MAGA is the Nazi cult that is kidnapping people off the streets and making them disappear, just like the Nazis did in Germany to the Jews. Enough of this. This has to stop. We do not want the MAGA sign installed on our precious library. The people have spoken. Trash the sign and stop the MAGA agenda. MAGA is a cult of mean-spirited people who are attempting to cause chaos at the recent No King protest. I witnessed it firsthand by them wanting to cause fights. Stop the madness. We've had enough, and since the city won't recognize it, Happy Gay Pride Week, Happy Gay Pride Month.
Next speaker.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tim Geddis in the House. Last Saturday, there were peaceful No Kings protest rallies up and down the coast in Southern California, including a great showing here. There were reportedly 5,000 attendees at the Long Beach No Kings, which was more than twice the number who showed up for the Trump Birthday Bash and Military Parade in Washington, DC. It fizzled while our coastal one sizzled. Equally embarrassing for you and the MAGAs were the results of the Measures A and B election, which showed clear community support for our current public library system and the outright rejection of the warped and perverted views your side projected about our library staff and volunteers. I know you can't feel being ashamed, but you should be blamed for all your million-dollar missteps. We deserve much better.
Next speaker.
Hi, TJ England. I am very happy to come here tonight and to acknowledge and thank all of the Huntington Beach voters, all who turned out for our million-dollar midterm election, however you chose to vote, your conscience. We saved our library, and we've prevented book banning. Thank God. I'd like to thank the Friends of the Library, the volunteers that do such amazing work day after day. We are so blessed to have this quality people in our city. I'd also like to acknowledge by first name only some of the movers and shakers that helped us save our library. Pat, Carol, Natalie, Kathy, Paula, Larry, Barbara, Gina, Judy, Lindsay, Chris, Kanan, and Connie, and many others. I'd also like to acknowledge all of the wonderful, intelligent letters written to the editor of our papers over the last two years, such as Richard, David, Mark, Ted, Kathy, Nora, Andrew, Carol. I could go on and on, but I am so impressed with the intelligence of our people who speak up against what they believe. I'm confused a little bit on this number 16 item. I was going to complain about this one minute that we've been allowed to speak, basically...
Good evening. Thank you, Huntington Beach voters, for approving Measures A and B to protect our public library from censorship and privatization. Over four months last year, hundreds of volunteers gathered signatures and spoke with neighbors from across the political spectrum, people who deeply value their library. Despite misinformation, voters stood firm. This truly bipartisan result is in a hyper-partisan time, proves that trust in our library runs deep. Now, to try to restore trust, here are a few actions for our council, our city, to implement or consider. Reconsider the proposed megaplag. Choose a market marker consistent with existing ones. Address the city's structural budget deficit. Establish district-based voting to avoid a costly lawsuit. Review the city's sign ordinance to reduce election season visual blight. And there's a couple others too. I'm sure you've gotten letters about this stuff. Restore eliminated boards and commissions. Develop a citywide robust neighborhood park maintenance program. Let's try to get ahead of problems before they grow, and begin restoring trust in our beautiful city government. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Freedom, democracy, truth. That's what I saw when I drove onto a college campus the other day for a meeting, and saw the American flag flying there. And right beneath it was a pride flag. This pride flag welcomes people. It tells people they are accepted no matter who they are. And it warmed my heart, that our colleges still do that, that they are not following what you have proposed in our city, which is not acceptance. They accept everyone, and that is important, and it is what I hope everyone will always do. Because as last I remembered, we are all God's children, and we should accept everyone for who they are. Freedom, democracy, truth is what the residents of Huntington Beach voted for when they, last week, for Measures A and B. last week, for Measures A and B. There were a plethora of donors, plethora, if you don't know what that means, big, huge amount of donors for Measure, for the yes campaign. We didn't need a donor that just donated $20,000. We are not ever going to forget who your real target was with this manufactured crisis. Your real target was the LGBTQ+ community. You wanted to make it your control of making sure that you could remove anything that was gay, lesbian, or trans from the libraries. And we're not going to let people forget that. I will fight tyranny, and I will fight fascism as long as I live. Happy Pride!
Congratulations, Huntington Beach. You successfully navigated your way through the misinformation and disinformation spread by members of this city council, and you passed Measures A and B by big margins, Measure B by more than 20%. The success of these measures means the HB libraries will continue to function as they always have, without private for-profit management and staffed by professional librarians. However, it's not time to let your guard down. Some of the same people that spent 1.2 million of your tax dollars to bring this special election forward will be on the ballot next year. When that time comes, remember what they put this city through. Remember the horrifying signs they put up all over town. Then, remember the well-managed town HB used to be before the culture wars. And finally, Item 16 will be quietly passed without discussion. HB will be agreeing to cease and desist from stomping on our rights. Mayor Burns's prior acts of cutting off speakers, threatening the audience, emptying the room were all violations of the Brown Act, and he will be officially agreeing to stop those actions. Thank you, ACLU. Happy Pride!
So, a week ago, we had a special election and got a 40% response, which is really amazing considering this is a country where we can barely get 60% of people to vote for a president. It was wonderful to see our people voting with their conscience, being passionate, and ultimately, I would dare say, virtue prevailed. Unfortunately, within a couple weeks, the senior librarian left over cloudy circumstances, and it's thought that it might involve removing a book called The Gunkel from the adult book club. This is really a shame, because if you read the book, it's wholesome and espouses family values. You just have to look past the title and see it. But that's not why I'm here. We spent over a million dollars on an election that was seemingly about protecting children. Think about LGBTQ children for a second. Banning the pride flag and erasing representation doesn't make them straight. It makes them lonely and think that maybe God made a mistake with them. If you care about kids, and all Americans acknowledge LGBTQ folks, they're not going away. They've been around for far too long. Look at David and Jonathan in First Samuel. Look at Baron von Steuben, who won the Revolutionary War and left his estate to his sons. LGBTQ folks are veterans. We've had at least one LGBTQ president, maybe two. Their pastors, their church musicians, and politicians say nothing of the Sunset Beach surfers on the Dielat Mother's Tavern. Banning the pride flag dishonors them, their allies, and the parents who love them. And regarding Item 16, you all owe Randy Winkon an apology. Happy Pride!
Next speaker, please.
Good evening, Mayor Burns, council members. My name is Russell Neal, and I live in Huntington Beach. In hindsight, the success of Measures A and B changed nothing. As to Measure A, the elected council still retains complete control over any policy developed by the unelected director of library services. Measure B merely inhibits the council from doing things it was never going to do in the first place. Measures A and B's false narratives and fearmongering robs their success of even much political significance. The proponents are left with a victory of ashes. This council will move forward with its good work unaffected. Thank you.
Hi, Canaan Durham, speaking on behalf of Pride at the Pier. And as we're talking about misuse of the taxpayer dollars, I want to talk about the Huntington Beach Police Department. So, on Sunday of this past week, Pride at the Pier reported on our social media information from reporters on the ground in LA about Huntington Beach Police Department officers being there on the ground in the mix, along with mounted units that had been participating in police brutality. We posted that and invited folks to come to the Civic Center for a protest. We had a couple nights in a row of that. And somebody who had shared that on social media got a text message from a Huntington Beach police officer who said, "No, this is not true. This is false information. No HPPD officers were deployed to Los Angeles. This is just flat-out not true." And then later, the Huntington Beach Police Department issued a statement on the Facebook page saying, "Well, we had officers that were there, but they were there for observational purposes." So, we took several days to work with as many journalists as we could on the ground to get video and photo evidence of HPPD officers in the mix, standing right next to mounted officers as protesters were trampled and deeply, deeply hurt. Now, I'm not here to say whether or not that was the right decision. I'm not here to say, you know, how you should feel about protesters and police. What I am here to say is that those are our taxpayer dollars, those are our resources, and as residents, we deserve a level of transparency to know what of our Huntington Beach resources are being deployed to a different county entirely. Thank you.
Happy Pride, council members. I'm here speaking to you exactly one week after Measures A and B passed. Thank God. Maybe now you'll see that MAGA is in a failing ideology, but if the voting wasn't enough, perhaps the overwhelming participation of our city's No Kings protest will have changed your mind. You wasted city funds on a special election you were doomed to lose. And speaking of wasted money, why were our police paid with our tax dollars in LA? Observing? I don't think so. Ample video proof has been posted online of our cops assisting the LIPD. As if thousands of National Guardsmen and Marines weren't enough, obviously, LA needed our police department? It's ridiculous. How much did it cost to send them up there? And why does our police department feel emboldened to lie about their involvement on social media? Why do they feel emboldened to lie about it in text messages? Let me guess, they know you'll protect them. Consider protecting us instead.
Next speaker.
Good evening. Took my bike ride like I usually do on Saturday and ended up downtown like I usually do. Didn't plan on staying as long as I did, but when I saw the interaction and what was happening, I felt compelled to stay and observe. What I saw, and I was very pleased to see, is our police department being proactive, respectful, engaged with the public consistently throughout, discreet. The one gentleman that was arrested, people just a few feet away had no idea what was going on. It was done so well. So, thank you for the training. Thank you for the leadership, and thank you, HPPD.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good evening. My name is Kenny Noway. I'd like to start off my presentation by honoring the Pride Month in memory of my good friend Fred Provantche. Fred Provantche was the vice chair of the Human Relations Task Force at the same time that I was the chair. And many people in this room will remember that that was a time when the city came together in unison to prove that Huntington Place can indeed be a place where we can be proud to live and say we're from. The Statement of Human Dignity that was drafted by the city council was a model that was adopted by the League of Cities, and at that moment in time, we were considered the best example of how people can live and work together. So, in Fred's name, I want to thank him for all of his work. I also want to thank staff for the 2023-24 Infrastructure Report. Upon reviewing this report, it is noted that if the only source of income to fund infrastructure, $1.8 million infrastructure budget, is this 15% that comes from our general fund, it would take over 100 years to pay for the infrastructure project. Since this is not a reasonable result, I believe that the people of Huntington Beach should know the following. A description of each infrastructure project, estimated completion date, and then estimated cost to complete the project. A description of how this project will be paid for, whether it be grants, partnership, user fees, or parcel taxes. The people of Huntington Beach deserve to know the facts regarding this very significant project. Thank you.
Next speaker.
Thanks to the Huntington Beach citizens here and at home. The Campaign of Truth and Creativity won on June 10th. Thanks to our creative Protect HB, we had storytime with Buffy, the Bad Liar Slayer. We had five songs on porn, on Chad, on Gracie, and on Winning created for us. We had poems on the evil city council and the great Protect HB. We had corner campaign crews Wednesdays, Fridays, and Sundays out there with our signs. We had read-ins at Central Life, Banning, Murphy, Main Street, and Oakview Carnival. We had canvassing, we had bookmarks, we had signs, signs, signs. We had city council speakers, we had letters to the editor, we had Substacks, we had Cheers. We had the press from France, Germany, Japan, Australia, and other places. We had social media. We had the happy anti-porn meetups. We had search city marches. We had Friday marches, and we had more. Our biggest plus at Protect HB was people, lots of people, and the truth. And I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Chad for those porn signs, and if I didn't thank If I didn't thank Gracie for putting them all around the schools. And I'd be remiss if I didn't say a cheer, because that's what I do best. So, you're going to say read, and you're going to say free. What do we want to do? How do we want to read? What do we do? How do we want to read? What do we want to do? And how do we want to read? Good job. Pat, last year, you wanted to claim Huntington Beach as a First Amendment-friendly city. Yet, on May 6th, you stopped my speech calling out your dangerous rhetoric and other council members' homophobic posts and fearmongering claims. Then you interrupted two more speakers. That's censorship. Thankfully, the ACLU reminded you the First Amendment and the Brown Act aren't suspended because of your discomfort. They protect the very speech you tried to silence. The library fiasco all of you created framed as protecting children hid the true threat to our kids, which is your hateful divisive rhetoric that causes far greater harm than any book ever could. I was saddened to see a young boy had a sign at the No Kings protest at the pier with words supporting ICE raids and cursing our foreign friends. That sign was an example of how your hateful rhetoric can empower parents to teach their children fear, division, and bigotry, which robs them of their innocence and shapes the next generation to hate those who are different than them. Books aren't the threat to children. Your words are. The majority of Huntington Beach residents and Americans are tired of all this MAGA chaos and want reasonable, unifying, and kind leaders. Please be better and embrace differences. Unite our city and lead with love. I'm here to help you if you need any help.
Next speaker.
Good evening, council members. Mayor Burns, you know, I'd like to thank city council for not rolling over on this library issue. I think it was an important issue. I understand both sides of the story. While you may be protecting the LGBTQ community, it could also be potentially harmful for other children who... This material is too advanced. And Chad, thank you for all the effort that you put out. I think it was a fight worth fighting. I don't think this fight's over. I find it hard to believe that so many people voted yes on this. I feel like, no, I feel like the public was deceived. I walked out and talked to, I walked out and I talked to one of the protesters outside, and I said, "Let's just be clear. You're fighting to keep this book in the children's section of the library." And he said, "That book doesn't exist. You're not from around here."
Don't disrupt.
Anyway, it was shocking how hard the library fought when, you know, there was a reasonable compromise. There was, you know, the committee had never been formed. You said the committee threw out all these books. That never happened. There was no banning of the books. You could read the ordinance. It doesn't say to ban the books. There was a lot of misinformation, and I think that was very disingenuous of the Friends of the Library. But, you know what? This, and, and, you had a chance. We could have, we could have had our normal election, a normal time. The Friends of the Library forced this election. Absolutely. Oh, yeah, we...
Please don't disrupt the speaker. You have your chance.
And I wouldn't acknowledge that Rincon letter from the ACLU. It is complete fabrication. You can't run into a theater and yell "fire." There's a, there's a civil... Come on, people. Thank you.
Next speaker.
My name is Brian Shower. I've been cited 44 times in the last 12 months for the 72-hour parking law, limitation law. What's really shocking is the fact that I haven't been guilty one time, and I have irrefutable evidence that clearly demonstrates my undeniable innocence. It was through the need to deal with this that I uncovered a very well orchestrated to use and ensnare innocent people and exorbitantly distort their money by impounding their vehicle and charging $840 to get it back on the same day. The entire platform is completely rigged to prevent anyone from being able to contest it in court. I miraculously was able to obtain a court hearing, and I actually won it, but that was only because the prosecution had failed to appear and utilize the other loopholes it had. Regardless, I've been told by the police lieutenant that if I want my reimbursement monies, I would have to sue the city. So, I wrote to the city attorney, starting over a month ago, to see if I must waste my time and the city's resources by unnecessarily bringing this matter through the courtroom, again, just to get my money back, but more importantly, to make this undeniable scheme to defraud the public, stop robbing its own citizens of their money, and holding their vehicles hostage with no other option to pay and walk away. I began collecting an enormous amount of evidence that, when combined, clearly demonstrates a carefully orchestrated scheme designed to defraud you and to strip you of your rights to contest it. If you feel that you've been scammed by the police department in this or any other manner, please email me at marvelsforutwo@me.com, and together, maybe we can stop the corruption from spreading like a cancer, because when integrity and honesty is lost in one area, it likely is in others. Thank you.
Next speaker.
I want to start by saying Huntington Beach voters showed up. Measures A and B weren't just about library policy. They became a test of who we are as a community. Are we a place that values freedom, inclusion, and professionalism? Are we a place where facts matter, where we solve real problems, not invent new ones? The voters answered yes. And it wasn't for lack of effort on the other side. We saw the porn signs on every corner. We watched national influencers, Kirk Cameron, Charlie Kirk, Jack Hibbs, parachute into Huntington Beach on Election Day, desperately trying to tip a local race. Huntington Beach on Election Day, desperately trying to tip a local race. But our neighbors didn't fall for it. They saw it for what it was, an attempted hostile take of our library, driven by fear, moral panic, and outside agendas. Instead, the people of the city chose common sense. They chose our librarians, they chose our freedoms, and they chose to reject a culture war that never belonged here in the first place. One council member said after the results, "Tomorrow is a new day." And you know what? He's right. The voters here have given us that new day: a chance to return to real governance, to public safety, infrastructure, housing, homelessness, economic development, structurally balancing the budget, the actual work that makes life better for the people who live here. To everyone who knocked doors, made calls, signed petitions, and stood up for the truth, this is your victory. And to the entire city, let's move forward together, stronger. I'm hopeful we're also learning lessons about the importance of protecting open, uncensored public dialogue in this and the other chamber as well. The culture war was lost, the community won, and now it's time to get back to work. Thank you.
Good evening. Kathy Ryder, Huntington Beach homeowner and voter since 1985. The Protect HB leadership team credits this win to the dedication of hundreds of volunteers who worked tirelessly on the Vote Yes campaign. The voters in Huntington Beach have made it clear that government overreach on the operations of the Huntington Beach Public Libraries was unacceptable. Our public libraries do matter, and voters across party lines overwhelmingly said so with their vote. So let's use this opportunity to find ways to do some work together to hold our elected officials accountable. So thank you to Huntington Beach. And now is the time to write a new political sign policy. Residents are clearly over the large corner signs that blanket our city for weeks. The cost alone is incredibly wasteful, and the environmental impact is equally significant. So I urge this council to take action now to stop this political sign war, practice some good governance, create a task force of voters, bring in Republicans, Democrats, and NPP residents to develop a new approach to campaign signs. We can and should do better. And by the way, happy pride.
Hi, I wanted to talk about, just briefly, number 16, very briefly. Without admitting any violation, I look at all of you, and it makes me so sad. I'm past being mad, I'm past being angry. You will never admit any wrong with anything you've done, and you have supporters supporting that. When I was at Huntington Beach, I had a sign that said, "Hate Doesn't Make America Great", and I had the biggest sadness in my heart because these young teenage boys came right into my face and they screamed, "Hate Makes America Great." The only people that were getting so extreme, you know, is the people, the MAGA's. And we had signs that were all homemade, not things that were manufactured in China. And it was huge. And I just... It just makes me sad. And LGBTQ should be honored, and I'm not going to count out anybody in particular, but I did speak with one of you councilpeople who told me that if children read those books, they will become gay. As well as if you say something nice to a murderer, that they will murder more. I am not a liar, I am telling you what I heard. Thank you.
Any more speakers?
Yes, we have a few more speakers. Barbara Snyder, Paula Schaefer, Wendy Rincon, Sydney Rincon, Veronica Monger, Trevor Boe.
Next speaker, please.
Valentina Bankhead, HB resident. Mayor Pat Burns, the ACLU cease and desist is a cheap shop weaponized attempt to reprimand you with lawfare tactics. We like you just the way you are. Stay strong and keep doing what you are doing. We love you as is. The Trump rally birthday party this weekend for President Trump, the 250-year anniversary of the Army, and Flag Day event held by the legal immigrants and US citizenized Vietnamese for Trump was peacefully held and powerful. Unfortunately, the No Kings Democrat Communist Party people can't control their insults towards the Asian legal immigrants that attended. The No Kings protesters also got into violent situations. God knowing, we are One Love HB, the following does not go unseen. I want to thank the Huntington Beach Police Department for their quick action on arresting a violent aggressive suspect that was carrying a weaponized Mexican flag that had a gun in his waistband and threatened to push and throw an HB resident or visitor onto the street and into oncoming traffic. And thank you for stopping and arresting a young man that was aggressively attacking our law enforcement police horses. You stopped the threat to our small beachside town, and it is important that you know we are... That you work hard, and the risks that you take, we understand that. You are truly heroic, and the residents of Huntington Beach are very blessed and super thankful for your service to our safety and protection. You secure our city and lead us through chaotic situations that could otherwise shadow people's lives or the community's well-being. You are unwavering to our loyalty and dedication action to the city. Thank you, and God bless the state of Huntington Beach.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, City Council. I wasn't going to speak tonight, but I was motivated by what I was hearing. But let's talk a little bit about the false narrative about a mandate here in Huntington Beach. We have 136,000 voters in Huntington Beach. The yes voters got 36,000 votes. That means 100,000 residents that are registered to vote, and Huntington Beach did not vote yes for the initiatives. So the good news is, for Huntington Beach, is that you just woke up a sleeping giant of Republican voters coming into the next elections. Don't think this is going to be a momentum for you guys. Secondly, if I heard about the HPV going up to LA, if that's true, that's fantastic. When you see that they're burning cars, they're throwing bricks and rocks at law enforcement officers, or spitting at officers, they're blocking traffic on the highways, they're burning the American flag, and it seems the Democratic Party is a little bit confused. About a year ago is the Ukraine flag they're purchasing, then about six months ago is the Palestinian flag, and then last week it was the Mexican flag, and then tonight I've been hearing about the Pride flag. But what I don't hear about is the American flag, it represents all of us, not some of us. Now, as far as the No Kings riot, or not riot, well, there was riot in some cases. But while I saw in Huntington Beach this weekend was signs saying 86-47, and if you're worried about your kids saying hateful things, that's saying that you want to murder the President of the United States. And calling Trump a Nazi, I mean, there are some disgusting things going on, and I'd be embarrassed to say that I was part of that group. And as far as the MAGA's concerned, the United States, we had the popular vote, and we're going to continue to run this country better than anyone in the history of the United States. Thank you.
Paula Schaefer. Regarding Agenda Item Number 16, I am pleased to see that the City Council has agreed to abide by the rules of the Brown Act and the First Amendment to the Constitution as they pertain to the conduct of these City Council meetings. I am hopeful that this recognition of the applicability of the laws and the First Amendment, and agree to adhere to these being done promptly and without unnecessary litigation or delay, has been often done in the past. Furthermore, I hope that this constitutes a new direction for the City Council in treating members of the public, that is, we, the voters of the city. My second topic this evening is to thank the many voters of the city for their efforts on the Vote Yes for Measures A and B. We're awaiting the certification of the election and believe that the message to the City Council should be evident. The voters of this city do not want the 21-member committee or the outsourcing of the library. As soon as the certification results are announced, I expect that the city manager and the community and library services director will be removing the info about the committee from the city's website and update the library's book curation policy to conform the language of the measures. Since I have a few more seconds, the city should analyze the voting patterns and consider dropping its voter identification requirements, since that would require in-person voting, something that doesn't seem to be very much of interest to Huntington Beach voters. And also, please reconsider the placement of the MAGA plaque, which will not reflect well on you in the future.
Next speaker.
I'm Barbara Snyder. I am a retired librarian, and my last job was the central branch manager for the city county of Santa Cruz. And as such, I served all the people of Santa Cruz. I had a book discussion group. I listened to people read books and weigh the issues in those books with kindness, care, and compassion. When I heard that this City Council does not want some books discussed by city councils, by book discussion groups, I was sad. Just because you are taking the intellectual freedom away from people that think the most deeply in your city and that provide the most quality in your city. My notes have been crossed out like a million times because I care so much about what the people that I have served, the many types of people that I have served: the homeless, people out of prison, young people, old people, highly intelligent authors, scientists. And then to come here and see that people are not given the respect that they need, that they deserve, kind of makes me sad. I would remind...
Thank you. Next speaker.
Wendy Rincon, 51-year resident. I'm here tonight because I had the ACLU send you a cease and desist letter on my behalf, which is Agenda Number 16. On May 20th, 2025, Mayor Pat Burns violated my First Amendment rights and the Brown Act when he shut me down during public comment simply because he didn't like that I was directing comments to Chad Williams and to Don Kennedy in my speech. Let me be clear, it is not illegal to criticize elected officials. What is illegal is silencing dissent, violating open meeting laws, and suppressing speech in a public forum. This isn't just about me. This is about the democratic principles you swore to uphold. I asked the council to take this warning seriously and ensure that every resident, regardless of viewpoint, is allowed to speak without unlawful interference. This city does not belong to one party, one mayor, or one agenda. It belongs to we, the people. And no butch, I don't think that I'm a hero. As you wrote on Facebook a day after the agenda dropped, I'm a constituent. You might want to keep that in mind when you have a cease and desist letter on your desk from me via the ACLU. Also, Happy Pride Month, and congratulations, AP, for getting it right regarding the library.
Next speaker, please.
Evening, City Councilmembers. I want to say I feel a little spoiled today having two minutes to talk, that doesn't usually happen. So I do want to start with just as a reminder, recognizing that we are all proud patriots, we all act for the American people, we all speak for the American people. Am I correct? Thank you. At least, you know, other constituents, Americans in the room have responded. I would like to just recognize, as a little reminder for everybody here, is that the First Amendment protects our right, that Congress shall make no law, Congress or our government shall make no law against or to prohibit the freedom to exercise freedom of speech, of press, the right for people to assemble, et cetera. I'm sure we've all seen it, I would assume that our representatives have all read the Constitution and recognize this. I'm sure our councilmembers are also familiar with the Second Amendment that grants the people the right to bear arms against tyrannical fascist governments. I would also like to recognize that, given that we're all fellow proud patriots, then we, some of us, Pat Burns, would recognize that wearing the American flag as clothing is against Section 8 of the flag code and its desecration. And its desecration of our proud American flag and of our country. I'm very proud to stand up and to speak for our people despite such grim faces facing me today. And I do hope that we address maybe a little bit more appropriately next time as we represent our city. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Next speaker.
Good afternoon, Councilmembers. My name is Veronica, and I thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here to bring to the attention another towing problem that has happened and that many people have been consistently impacted, consumers in our community. Across multiple vehicle tow impound services, we are seeing routine charges that exceed published rates, not by large, obvious margins, but by small, inconsistent overages that add up quickly to everyday people. Let me give you a few examples. Tow hook fees that are published at 200, yet consumers are being charged 205. Dolly skids, which should be 81, and are being charged at 86. Daily impound fees are published at 81 online and that were approved by the City Council are being billed at $86 by Best Towing, which is the towing company that is contracted with the city and that the police use. These are not isolated mistakes or rare exemptions, they are a reoccurring pattern. On average, customers are being overcharged by at least $5 per item, sometimes more. For someone whose car is impounded for multiple days or who has already a stressful financial situation, these extra fees add insult to injury. They may seem small, but the principle matters: transparency and fairness adheres to published rates are not optional. The service costs, such as $81, should cost $81. Anything else feels like a hidden tax and undermines public trust.
Ma'am, can you fill out a blue card?
Next speaker, please.
Forgive me, I have multiple sclerosis, so if my speech doesn't come out quite... My name is Trevor. I am here because several weeks ago, I was pulled over and I was arrested. My vehicle was impounded as a stolen vehicle. I was kept incarcerated, or kept detained for 17 hours before being charged. They kept my vehicle for a month. I paid, by the way, what she's saying is true, I ended up paying $4,300 to get my vehicle back for one month. They told me it was being held as evidence, it was released as evidence. After one month, I'm cleared of any wrongdoing. My house was raided. My only tie to what happened, these other crimes, I guess there was some incident where there were stolen exotic vehicles in the city, is I have exotic vehicles. There is nothing else that puts me in connection with those people at all. And the police department has acted unprofessionally, I mean, to the extreme. My car was released as evidence on the 12th of last month, yet I can... My car was released as evidence on the 12th of last month, yet I went in there every week and asked them, can I get the stuff out of my vehicle? Can I have my vehicle back? No, it's being held as evidence. It wasn't held as evidence. It was released. Your department, I'm sorry. As far as the tow company goes, when I asked her about her fees and why she raised her fees, she said she had an agreement with the police department. I asked her who in the police department she had an agreement with. She wouldn't tell me. She said, and I said, you know, that's not legal. It'd have to go through City Council. She said, that's not really my problem. It's their problem. I don't really know what's going on in the city, and I've already made the police department, several lieutenants, and Detective Gonzalez is handling my case supposedly, aware of all of this, and nobody's done anything at all. And I'm continually, I still haven't received all of my property back. If you're giving back my vehicle, you arrest me for a stolen vehicle, you find out it's not stolen, why are you still holding my computers, my money, and everything in my house? Anyways, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Sir, are you with that lady right there? Are you with the other lady that spoke right before you?
Yes, I am.
All right, if you can, make sure you get, fill out a blue card also.
And I apologize, the MS, it's difficult for...
Yeah, all right, thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Oh, I'm sorry.
Next speaker.
Anti-fascist, proud for the first time in a long time with my city of Huntington Beach for rejecting your lies, your division, your... and not turning our back on what's really happening, your budget. Pay attention, folks. This is what we need to pay attention to. I think Mr. Kennedy told me that the greatest thing Huntington Beach had ever done was the air show. There's actually military people, the Blue Angels, that will do that air show for free. We got fleeced by your donors, Huntington Beach. This is a bought and paid-for city council, and we have time to change it when we vote again. Do not forget that Griselda Graceless Bander book started this. She'll be on the agenda. She thinks she's going to win Assembly, but with Matthew Harper, girlfriend's going to be back with us in Huntington Beach unless we kick her out. Pat Burns, my girlfriend, Wendy, has been in Huntington for 50 years and doesn't need you in your fake patriotism to tell her when she can speak. The rest of you are boring, stupid, white people, and Chad, you're a, yeah, and Chad, I can't thank you. And Mr. Thiessen, where are you and your 20 grand that you don't have to spend one more time for us? Yes, on A and B showed you who you are. And Huntington, 45-year resident, I knew this to be true, most of us want to talk about the beach and the weather, not your...
All right, that concludes the public speaking. Council members, do you have any council committee appointment announcements? Hearing none. AB 1234 reporting, does anyone have anything to report? Butch.
I attended the Southern California Association of Governments meeting up in Los Angeles last week.
Okay, openness and negotiation disclosures, does anybody have anything to disclose? Nothing. City managers report. City manager, do you have anything to report?
Nothing today, mayor.
Okay, consent calendar, 8 through 14 was in, does anybody want to pull anything? Don?
12, please.
12?
Yes.
All right, and then anybody else? All right, I'll move forward, 8, 9, 10, 11, 13, 14.
Second.
All right. City clerk, call the roll.
Councilman Twining?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 601.
All right. Councilmember Kennedy, number 12.
Thank you, mayor. Hi, Chow. Just a couple of questions on the agreement. I just went through it and just looked at just some of the deal points. Just had some questions for clarity for any residents who may have read it also. So in the PowerPoint, it said the construction cost was estimated at 1.3 million, the bid was at 1.1 million. Was the 1.3 in the PowerPoint just an estimate and the 1.1 was the bid?
Bobby, click it on.
Yes, that is correct. The construction cost is $1,099,477 with contingencies at 20%, 219,895 for total cost of 1.3 million.
Okay. I thought that may be it, but so this contract, this agreement has a 20% contingency, the sewer, the sewer contract has a 10% contingency. You foresee more variance in this one for some reason?
Yes, because with vertical projects such as the locker room, we don't know what we're going to find with these, with the aging facility that we have here. Flooring, plumbing, HVAC, we're ripping open some walls, and there's a lot more uncertainty with this project versus the sewer line.
Okay, so with that said, that kind of ties into my other point here, in Section 12, Section 12, Section A, E delineates the differing site conditions, unknown physical conditions differing from those ordinarily encountered. So what we're trying to avoid is another oil well fiasco where some things that are potentially going to come about should be known by the contractor to a certain extent. You know, it's walls, it's pipes. So if you spend that additional 20%, what happens if they need more money?
We stay within the 20% contingency. If it exceeds, we go back to council and ask for more money, for more authority. We would have to come back.
So when they make these bids, you just want to make sure that somebody doesn't bid low and know that they can bid up the job with, by saying, well, we didn't know it was going to have this, that, or the other thing. That's what I'm just trying to avoid on a move forward. We've seen it happen previously. Just want to kind of set a precedent that these contractors, they need to have an acute awareness of what should be on the other side of the wall, how the plumbing may be problematic, and, you know, it's fairly elementary when you talk about building. There shouldn't be too many surprises. So I want to make sure that we're holding these people accountable to their bid and not just giving them the low bid win, and then they can come back for more money.
So we call those change orders.
Right.
And we have to evaluate every single change order that comes to us. Change orders can be a positive, it can also be negative. So you could also see savings in a change order. We look at every single one. We look at the estimated costs, their requested amount, we do comparables. We look at other estimates from other contractors to make sure that their cost is within range and that we're not, you know, getting gypped in any way. So we do our homework on those change orders.
And that's a fair statement. But in Section 13, where there are variations of estimated quantities, that's just another caveat that, again, if they estimate low on the building materials or the things needed, how much further will you go beyond the 20%? Or if you go beyond the 20%, you have to come back to council?
We have to come back. If it's not within our budget, we will not be, we have to come back for council authority.
Okay, fair enough. I just want to make sure that, you know, the way to bid the city contracts is come in low and then move it up with contingencies and change orders, that's all. Thank you.
You want to move the item?
Yes, let's move that item, mayor.
All right, I'll second it. City clerk, please roll call.
Councilman Twining?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 601.
All right, administrative items, number 15. Staff, introduce your report.
Thank you, mayor. Marissa Sir, our HR director, will provide the staff report.
All right, good evening. The item before you tonight is a proposed side letter of agreement with the Police Officers Association. Sorry, I'm just waiting for the PowerPoint to load. So a quick overview for you. The current side letter of agreement was, it's not on, this is... was adopted June 30th, 2023, and the proposed side letter amend, the current MOU was adopted in June 2023. The proposed side letter amends language related to certain special pays provided for in the MOU as it relates to CalPERS requirements. So specifically, Article 7 of the MOU, through this, by way of this proposed side letter, would modify to include specific language regarding reporting requirements for the special pays. Specifically, it would outline minimum qualifications, testing process, selection process for certain employees to be eligible for the pays. Now, the reason this came to be is because after the side letter, I'm sorry, after the MOU was adopted, CalPERS audited through the MOU and determined that although the city has previously agreed to report these special compensation items to CalPERS as compensation for the employees who receive them, the MOU as written is not acceptable in its form for CalPERS to actually accept that. So we are not in compliance with our MOU. So the city, through the attorney representing the city, as well as the attorney representing the POA, got to work on reviewing the language, making modifications that would change the language to meet the CalPERS requirements, and then they worked with CalPERS to make sure that they reviewed it and also signed off on the language as is to make the pays reportable. By way of the side letter, there are no new special pays being added or benefits being added. There's no modification to the benefits that are available to employees. This is simply an administrative item that is clarifying language and providing language to bring us into compliance with CalPERS requirements. So with that, the staff recommendation would be for the council to adopt Resolution Number 202547, and the alternative action would be to not approve it and recommend direction to staff accordingly. And with that, I believe Captain Garcia is...
Does anybody have any questions? I'll move the item as recommended. Okay, roll call, please.
Councilman Twining?
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy?
Yes, yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilman Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 601.
Okay, item number 16, response regarding cease and desist letter alleging Brown Act violations. The recommended action is without admitting any violation of the Brown Act, the city of Huntington Beach hereby unconditionally commits that it will cease and desist from and not repeat the challenge passed action and described in the letter from the ACLU dated May 22nd, 2025, analysis section of this staff's report. I'll move the item.
Second.
All right. Who, Gracie, I believe, second. Gracie, I believe. City attorney, do you have anything? Nothing?
No.
Okay, call the roll.
Councilman?
Please don't interrupt. Yeah, just don't interrupt.
Councilman Twining? Councilman Kennedy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem McKeon?
Yes.
Mayor Burns?
Hi.
Councilwoman Vandermark?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes 601.
All right, would any council member like to add any new business to the next agenda? The next regularly scheduled meeting of the Huntington Beach City Council Public Financing Authority is Tuesday, July 1st. Meeting location information will be included on the July 1st, 2025 City Council Agenda due to construction at the City Council chamber.
Motion adjourned.
Second. We're adjourned.